I would go to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and conscious of all.
Then the item two, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to make a slight change to the agenda, and I'd like to move Agenda Item Number Seven, Resolutions, Ordinances, Policies and Proclamation to the third spot on the agenda.
You're second to that.
Second.
Are there any discussion or questions regarding the matter? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Agenda is altered, is adopted. So we now picking up Item Number Seven, Seven A, Proclamation for Retiring Public Works Employee Alan Pellet here. We have them. We have a resolution.
Yeah, let me motion. How about I look for someone to read the proclamation? Whereas Alan Pelletier began his career with the Town of East Hampton in January nineteen ninety-two with the Water Pollution Control Authority as a wastewater operator. And whereas Alan Pelletier transferred to Department of Public Works in November nineteen ninety-four as a maintainer two and was promoted to a maintainer three in July two thousand eight. And whereas Alan Pelletier completed the Connecticut Public Works Academy Cert- Certificate Program in two thousand fourteen. And whereas Alan Pelletier throughout his thirty-three-year career with the Town of East Hampton has provided valuable service to the community and has contributed to the success of numerous public works projects. And has always strived to provide the best service to the residents of East Hampton. Now, therefore, we, the East Hampton Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of East Hampton, congratulate Alan Pelletier on his retirement. Thank him for his many years of service to the town and extend to him our best wishes for an enjoyable retirement with his family and friends.
Al is here. If you want to invite him up and hand that to him directly. Matt Walsh, the Public Works Director is here as well.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Sorry. Congratulations.
We also have Resolution of Proclamation for Retirement Police Officer John Wilson.
All right. Proclamation for Officer John Wilson. Whereas Officer John Wilson commenced his career with the Town of East Hampton, Connecticut on February fourteenth, two thousand and five, as a patrolman. And whereas Officer John Wilson, over his twenty-plus-year career, worked as a canine handler with his partner Ardo, field training officer, and a breath alcohol testing instructor operator. In addition to his regular patrols, service to the community, and numerous criminal investigations, which resulted in the arrests and convictions of individuals. And whereas Officer John Wilson honed his skills and increased his abilities through training and discipline, including basic patrol canine training, narcotic narcotic detection canine handler training, advanced interview and interrogation training, crime scene training, canine legal update training, search and seizure, basic SWAT training, advanced roadside impaired driver enforcement training, and various courses related to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security FEMA training, active shooter preparation, and response, and numerous other training courses. And whereas Officer John Wilson was a dedicated and valued member of the East Hampton Police Department and was respected by his peers and the community alike for his professionalism and compassion, which he exemplified in his everyday duties. Now, therefore, we, the East Hampton Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of East Hampton, extend our best wishes to Officer John Wilson on his retirement and acknowledge his notable career and his commitment to public service.
We're gonna miss you. Anytime you want to come back, just remember.
Congratulations.
We'll move on to Original Agenda Item Three, Approval of Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any errors, omissions, or changes to the minutes as presented? If not, hearing none, those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Then item four, Public Remarks. Is there anyone who would choose or care to make public remarks or comments at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
Donald Scranton, I'm the Chief of East Hampton Ambulance. I'd just like to express my thanks to the Town Council as a whole, along with the town staff and the other boards, specifically the ambulance task force that was formed last year. They did a lot of hard work over the last, I think it's nine months. And the report, ten months, and the report came out very well. We appreciate the town and the town residents who supported the task force, and we appreciate everything that was done. So thank you.
Is there anyone else? Do you have any comments? Name and address, please.
Derek Johnson.
In under three minutes.
Yeah, I've got a time. Don't you worry. Derek Johnson, Thirty-Six Lakewood Road here in East Hampton. All right, I'll get this back up. Sorry about that. I'm sure it's taking my time away. Here you go. Sorry about that.
Time's up.
Time's up. I'm sorry about that. Here you go. If I can find this. I'm sorry. I think that's exactly right. I definitely do. This goes on from seven in the morning till four o'clock. This is from my, this is from my front door, which is about a hundred feet from the construction that's currently taking place on Lakewood Drive. This pounding goes on from seven in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon, Monday through Saturday. And we are across the road. The noise, the incessant noise, the duration of it, the intensity of it. I did some informal decibel readings. It was over eighty where I'm standing at. Yeah, it is incredible. It is absolutely incredible. And I would hope and ask that the Town Council, as part of its general powers and duties to enact ordinances for the benefit of the public, that they consider and look at other towns to see what other towns are doing with respect to noise. I think East Hampton is probably one of the fewer, the fewest towns that don't have some type of noise ordinance. And I would respectfully request that, that you all consider such a noise ordinance. In the interim, I would ask that the Town Council ask the Town Manager to request the Town Attorney to determine what a public nuisance is. Because under the criminal statutes, a public nuisance is actionable. And I would ask that this body ask the Town Manager to determine what is the standard of a public nuisance. Because if it's not what we're hearing up there, I don't know what is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just for the edification of yourself and those here. We have, in the past month, been looking at, several of us on the council, a noise ordinance for the town. And that'll be something that we will be looking into in much greater depth in the next few weeks. Well, I'd say move up a little bit, but that's my voice. That's, I'm sorry about that. I will reiterate what I said, that the Town Council is looking into a noise ordinance as part of what we had planned on doing, and that is some drafting has been done and will be worked on over the next month or so. Is there anyone else who would care to make public comment at this time? If not, is there anyone on? Being raised. Move to the next item on the agenda. Presentations. Derek.
I've asked Juliette Hodge, the Town Planning and Zoning Official, to share with you a little bit tonight and with the public about the upcoming plan for updating the Plan of Conservation and Development. So you have received in your packet, and others can see in the packet, a two-page document about that. But I'm going to ask Juliette to kind of come up and talk you through that a bit, add a little detail, and then answer any questions that may come.
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna take off my glasses, which means I can't see you, but I can see my paper. So you can make all the faces you want. So it's a P O C D obviously stands for the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is the town's long-range visionary plan, as opposed to like a short-term strategic plan. This is meant to be long sort of vision that provides a vision of what you want to be when you grow up. It's basically looking at aspects of housing, balancing the need for open space versus development. It would look at infrastructure needs in the future, facilities needs in the future. Sustainability is another topic that's usually covered in a Plan of Conservation and Development. Quality of life, transportation of topics. The goal is to try to get some sort of a community consensus on some of those topics, which is difficult. A plan is only as good as the public input we get. So for the plans that I've written in the towns that I've worked in, I spend a lot of time with public input. So that means starting with a survey that I'll let run for as long as I can before I need to get some summary data. And then a lot of neighborhood meetings, which I like to do, where I go to the different neighborhoods that we sort of identify throughout town, and I'll get some help figuring out what those various areas would be. And go to some, somebody's house or a church in that neighborhood or some gathering place, so we can have a more informal discussion on what you like about your neighborhood, what you want to preserve, what the town could be doing better, what we're doing well, you know, those kind of questions. And maybe some specific topics, like if I was in the lake commuting, community, we might talk about the lake in that particular meeting. And then there'll be a series of discussions on set topics like agriculture, or economic development, or open space preservation, whichever ones might, you know, sometimes topics come up in those neighborhood meetings that I want to spend a little more time on. Or topics come up in the, in the survey a lot that we might want to spend some more time on. And so to help me get through all those meetings and the survey, I will be putting together a steering committee of representatives from each of the major boards and commissions. And then that group will, will help me develop the survey. We'll talk about, you know, the summarizing the data and coming up, pulling out goals and objectives from that. They'll help organize a visioning session, which is sort of towards the end of the process where we all get back together. And now we have all of the data, all the surveys, the summaries of all the meetings. The mapping will be updated. We'll have our data profile, and then we sit down together as a big group, look at all of that, and try to develop a vision statement for the town and start talking about those goals and objectives. So it's, it takes, you know, a good year to get through all that, lots of extra meetings. And, you know, they try to make sure that they're on some night times, some weekends, some via Zoom, some in person. So it's very important that the public be engaged in this. You know, it's a great opportunity for community engagement. It's a great opportunity for me because I'm brand new to your town. I don't know any of you. So, you know, this will be good for me to quickly learn about the town and, and get out to the various neighborhoods and whatnot. So I love writing plans and kind of a nerd that way, but I think it's fun. In the P O C D, there are topics that you have to cover, whether you want to or not, however hot topic. You know, hot button topics they are, you have to cover them. Housing is, is probably one of the, the main ones. So economic development, housing, density of housing, different housing opportunities. So in the statute, it's a Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-three, I believe, is the statute that guides the P O C D. So they'll list out, thou shall discuss these things in your plan. And so we will, those will be a lot of the topics of those, of the informal discussions, but and then you also have to show consistency with the state Plan of Conservation and Development and the regional Plan of Conservation and Development. So if you don't complete your plan, you run the risk of not being eligible for some discretionary state funding. So it is important to do it. You can update it anytime if something radically changes in the town or some change in thinking, or you have another pandemic, or, you know, something that alters the sort of economic or social fabric of town, you're welcome to update the plan at any time. So I think some people get nervous about coming up with these goals and objectives because they think that's how we have to be for the next ten years. That's not true. At any point, you can update it if, if the consensus in town changes. So and of course, the only way to know if the consensus in town has changed is if you do actually attempt to implement your plan and touch base with all the boards and commissions as you go along. So usually I'll do that annually or have a bigger meeting every five years to see where we are. If you keep me around that one. But so that's basically, you know, what the plan is and what the process is. I did write up that document for you so you can see those, you know, the, the various meetings and whatnot. I'll have a spot on the website. So as I get summaries completed or mapping completed, I'll stick it up on the website. So everybody can interact with that as they want.
Juliette, when, when do you expect to start this process?
Dave and I were talking about that today. So we hope to have the first, you know, steering committee meeting at the end of April. I've already started the process of the map update and am putting together the R F P for the data profile, which part of it I can do, but if, you know, it's sometimes better to have you know, a third-party firm that has access to better software to, you know, I can't mine all of the data that I would want. So we'll have a company do that for us. So that's, that's in the works right now.
Said you were setting up a committee. How, how is that formed and how do you get involved with that?
So I've been going around to some of the, trying to get to some of the other boards and commissions that I haven't gone to to ask for a volunteer from that commission. So I'm going to send this, this document that you have out and just sort of a request that each board and commission listed sends somebody to that first meeting. And it's good to have like a primary person and an alternate because it is important for that board to provide this, you're my main group to provide me feedback on how I summarize some of these meetings or the survey. So and I need people to bounce ideas off too. So, so I'll send that out. You can respond to the email and I'll put together the list and then it, we'd meet probably once a month. Sometimes in the middle of that, we don't need to meet because I'm busy summarizing or getting through the meetings. So that's.
So and as the council, I'm sure noticed in the, in the document, she would ask that one of you volunteer or be voluntold. I guess that's already been done to.
I would love to.
To participate in that in the council.
Meetings. Why should we appoint you to that?
What's that?
You didn't show up at the planning and zoning meetings.
Alternate, and I had no say, no vote or anything, and I was there. And all I had to, the only thing you can do is make an opinion. And then the people that were sitting on the board sat there and did not say a word and then just voted. So to have someone that is actually involved in the meeting was not happening at the planning and zoning meetings. And therefore I did not go. You're a hundred percent correct. Because when you don't have vote, you don't have a say in anything that's going on, that is a hundred percent why I did not go. And Dave knew it, and so did the chair.
Nevertheless, the goal would be to have a representative or two from the Town Council that all and main member. So that you have that input. And like I said, Juliette and I have talked about this. We'll set that date and get those boards and commissions in. She's been to most of them, I think, by now. Many of them.
And I'll check in, you know, I usually try to check in with, I would check in with you guys, planning and zoning, obviously, and economic development. Those are the main commissions that I check in as we're going along. Just to keep you a little bit more informed.
My fellow council members, I don't want to be on them. I will talk to each and every one of you and get your feelings, what your thoughts are. And we'll have some kind of a meeting to discuss that. Probably you will point that at our next April meeting. Person and the primary and the alternative is besides.
Yeah, I mean, you both can come. It doesn't, it doesn't matter if, if two people show up, that's fine. Yeah, we don't have public comment per se during those because then we'd never get anything done, but, but I don't, I mean, as long as there's not a quorum of you, that's fine.
Any questions of Town Planner?
Just, just a comment. If this plan of development is out anywhere as great as your wetlands watershed regulations, it'll be a great report. Thank you for everything you did.
You're welcome.
For the watershed, I think it was great. We sorely needed it and at least look to me, my untrained eye, it'd be very, very good, wonderful, just what we needed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
And I guess I should mention, the way a, a plan of conservation and development is implemented is in large part through the zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, town ordinances, and some of the decisions you make. And I mean, it informs some of your decisions for your capital improvement plan. So there's other, other ways to implement it, obviously, but for the, those policy things, it's your town ordinances and your zoning regs. So, so we'll, we'll be making some more revisions as we go.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay.
I'm gonna go home.
Moving on, Agenda Item Six, Bids and Contracts.
If I may, I'll invite Chief Wesner up to talk about the responses we received for police vehicle maintenance and towing.
Good evening. Tonight before you is a request for a decision to award a bid for the towing of the maintenance, repair, and police vehicles. We did an invitation to bid a month ago. The bids were due March eleventh. And we received four bids. We received a bid from Belltown Motors, Three Brothers Auto Corp. in Hartford, Columbia Ford in Columbia, and Dowling Ford in, I'm not too sure where they are.
I'm not sure either. And I should know.
I should too. In order to determine the lowest bidder, because there was factors either high or low, as you see in the sheet, I used actual repairs that we had with our current vendor, twenty-eight in total, from July one of two thousand and twenty-four to February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I use the hourly rate and markup on the parts as two of the key factors in determining who was loader lower Belltown Motors, Three Brothers, Columbia, or Dowling. Dowling Ford was not part of the analysis, mainly due because their hourly rate was so much higher than the two other bidders, and their markup was list plus twenty-five percent. So the three main bidders, Belltown Motors has an hourly rate of one twenty, a list minus twenty percent. Three Brothers has an hourly rate of ninety with a list minus fifteen percent, but plus, thank you, plus fifteen percent. But they charge a hundred dollar diagnostic fee, which Belltown doesn't. Columbia Ford is one fifty-nine an hour, list minus thirty percent, and they charge a hundred and fifty-nine dollars for a diagnostic fee. So we broke down in a Excel spreadsheet and with parts and labor, with either their minus on parts or addition on parts and their labor, Belltown Motors came in at seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and forty-seven cents. Three Brothers in Hartford came in nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-one and nine cents. And Columbia Ford came in at nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight and seventy-one cents. Therefore, Belltown Motors was the lowest bid overall. They have been the bidder, the winning bidder since I've been here, coming up on seven years. And we have had nothing but good luck with Belltown Motors. This is just for the repair, towing, and maintenance of our vehicles, but we also allow other town departments to piggyback on that if they so choose. And any warranty work on our vehicles, then it would be outsourced to a Ford dealership. So my recommendation is that we go with Belltown if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair, can I just say something quick? One, I think also, Chief, that you, you did a great job on us, but we didn't even come into this as the convenience factor. Yeah. How much do we tie up two officers going to Dowling Ford's in Cheshire?
Thank you.
Columbia Ford, and I think this is, this is quite a bit, a little bit of a ride compared to Down Street. So we, if we even figured that into this map, it would be quite a bit different of savings.
I, I agree. I actually took a ride to Three Brothers in Hartford. It's over by Pope Park. And I had a conversation with the bidder, how he planned on securing the cars because that was obviously a concern of mine. And they, they did. A very nice gentleman I spoke to. They have the ability to put the cars, the police cars in the inside. But still, we would have, it's a good thirty-minute ride to drop the car off. They would give us a ride back. But with Belltown. Um, but with Bell Town, um, someone could drop the car off, the area car could swing by. Or on nice days, we've been known to walk uh, back. Um, so it is an inconvenience to have anything done outside of town. And Bell Town pays taxes in town. So I mean, that's that's another factor too, but the way it laid out, they were they were cheaper. When it when you took the minuses and the pluses and the hourly rate, so.
Want a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Bell Town Motors effective April ninth.
Second.
Are there any comments or discussion? I would just make one comment. I think it there is a an unforeseen benefit by having one of our vehicles parked in the front.
So. Have it be known, there has been a there's been a time where they've turned the cars around and faced them towards the street. Uh, to make it look like the car is actually running radar. So, um, which which is fine, as long as they fix them and they they're wherever they park it was fine with us.
Any other questions, comments? Not those in favor of accepting the motion to award the bid to Bell Town Motors or be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Votes nay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Moving on to a. Agenda item. Eight. Continuing business subcommittee reports and updates. Report from the ambulance task force. Houseman Nodick, would you like to make?
Yes. Especially because the job is over. And the meetings are done. In uh, in your packet and in our communications from um, the town, uh, town hall to the finance committee, to the ambulance task force to to uh. Uh, our our council, uh, we received the final report of the ambulance task force. The ambulance task force, as as you may remember, was set up last June or last May at least. Uh, to take a look at the the changing uh, financial landscape of of performing uh, emergency services. This was necessary because uh, uh, of such such great, great changes in um, uh, in what used to be a very standard. Operation. You had volunteer. Uh, EMTs coming in. You got fees for services from Medicare, Medicaid from and insurances. It covered the nut and that was it. We never had to pay for much here. Yeah, at the town level. But what has happened, that whole paradigm, that whole uh, schematic has changed dramatically over the last twenty years. Um, especially tougher to get volunteers, which costs nothing, right? And now we have to have per diems and 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 paid EMTs to be able to staff. Uh, our ambulance services. And this, by the way, is not just, uh, doesn't just relate to the East Hampton Ambulance Association. This relates to EMT uh, or EMS providers across the state, whether they be. Uh, volunteer ambulance associations like we have with the HAA. Uh, or if in fact, emergency services are an actual department of the town. Or if in fact, emergency services are provided by outside vendors. So, uh, we took a deep dive over ten months. In thirteen meetings. At five of those meetings, we met with towns and outside providers, other towns, outside providers to get their. Uh, uh, their experiences, their insight as to what they're going through. Uh, we met uh, three times, three meetings with our own East Hampton uh, ambulance association. To uh, uh, talk about uh, uh, what they do, how they service. And as we went through. The uh, uh, these ten months. We we took a look at this with with a particular goal or objective. Uh, and that was to to prioritize three things or look at three things. First, service. Who gave the best service? What did that look like? The second was cost. Which which methodology might be most cost efficient? And lastly was satisfaction by the community satisfaction. And uh, so we took a look at all these things each and every meeting. We'd meet with different people. Uh, we'd have discussions with them by ourselves. And those were the things that we uh, we really took a took a look at. What it essentially boiled down to is what I kind of alluded to at the beginning. That um, emergency services can't be free anymore. And have a successful uh, provision of services. They're costing money in every single municipality that we took a look at. Um, and that's a big change for many towns, certainly is a big change for East Hampton. Where in the past, town boards really have been uh, some degree reluctant to uh, to see this, to accept it. Um, so the work of this committee was very important to to ascertain that single point. That every single municipality in this state even, uh, and across the country is going to have to start ponying up. Budget money to have emergency services in their town. It's no longer free. I I think that is something the the main thing in fact that we uh, that we learned. So. That all being said. We came to a conclusion, a couple of conclusions, which is in the report. And I'd like to read it to you. This is our the recommendation of task force that for the foreseeable future. Uh, approximately three to five years through budget year ended June thirty, twenty thirty. The town of East Hampton will be best served by its current EMS provider, the East Hampton Ambulance Association. This recommendation is based on the on the association having successfully met the task force's three-pronged assessment criteria. Proven EMS service, reasonable cost compared to other modes of EMS delivery and community satisfaction. The town council is is advised to adopt and recommend to the Board of Finance a budget plan for the upcoming budget cycle. The the uh, budget year we're we're discussing now, next year. Uh, and beyond that ramps funding for continued uh, ambulance association operations. One of our meetings, we did take a look at projections. Of the uh, of what it costs the ambulance association to run. And uh, currently up through uh, um, up through October of last year, the monthly cost. The excess of of expense over what fees were being generated by services uh, was about twenty thousand a month. About two two hundred and fifty thousand a year at that, at that performance, performance as they have been doing. So, um, we, um, the projections did suggest that between now and three years hence. Uh, the town ramp up its financing uh, for uh. For the for emergency services. Uh, we suggested in that uh, in that uh, pro forma, in the projections, about a hundred thousand dollars. Now, uh, coincidentally, what happened, the um. The ambulance association did in fact uh, do its own uh, plan as well. Uh, which they completed really same time we completed ours and in fact, put together a budget, a more detailed budget going forward. Uh, where they requested about the same money, about a hundred and eight thousand, which in fact is what uh, uh, is included in our town budget. Is that correct, Dave? So coming at it two different ways, we're looking at to um, to really sustain EMS services. Uh, in town, we're looking about a hundred thousand dollars uh, a year, at least this next year and perhaps the next year going forward. So, um, that was, um, although coincidental, I think it was quite telling. There are a number of things that um, we have asked and we're recommending that we um, uh, suggest to East Hampton Ambulance Association. To um, to do and change in both their internal management and financial reporting. Uh, and um, a- again, you can, uh, I believe this report can be looked at in its uh, in its detail and its entirety. They're outlined there. But in fact, um, we feel that there can be some improvement on an already uh. Pretty good service that the ambulance association is already providing. After four, after three to five years, uh, we took a look at it and said, well, look. As long as, as long as they're properly funded, the ambulance association is properly funded. And they introduce these these improvements in management and fiscal management, uh, the uh, in operational management and fiscal management. You know, there there really is no time certain in the future where in fact, we have to change or do something different. Uh, relative to what emergency services. But what we did do is say, well, look, if in the future. There's some reason that the EHAA cannot continue in in serving us the way they have. Uh, for whatever reason, financial manpower doesn't make any difference. That we recommend that, in fact, we do not go to an outside provider. But that we make ambulance and services a separate and distinct department in. In in under our town auspices, bring it internally. Um, we feel that's the uh, to do anything else, we lose control of both cost and service. And uh, once we let it go, it'd be highly unlikely that we could ever bring it back in at a reasonable cost. So, um, that being said, um. That's the report, Mr. Chairman. That's the report of the task force and we're open to any questions. Of course, uh, Jordan. Here, Tim and Deb were uh, from the council were on that report uh, on that committee to to give the report. So any questions? We can go through it or Tim?
I just I just wanted to say a few things. First, I I did have the privilege of sitting on it and I decided I'm glad it's over, guys, right? Uh, but we learned a lot in every meeting. I felt we did. And I said that almost every meeting, I said, geez, every time we go to one of these uh, between other EMS services to towns and everything else, we uh. We 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 got some schooling on it, that's for sure. And um, I do believe this is the right thing to do what we're doing. I don't want to say nobody, but I've never run into anybody who said that um, our service is terrible in town by any means. And response time is proven day in and day out incredible. Uh, but it was an eye opener on a lot of other things. Um, that's for sure. And um. I'm losing track of my little notes here. I apologize, guys. But I guess what I'm saying is I I'm uh, I I I'm happy to have been involved with it. I'm happy. I think the outcome is going to be great. And I think it was the right move for the town. And sometimes, you know what? We have a premium service. And I mean that. And I think that, you know what? If if we have to pay a little bit as a taxpayers, uh, I think it's still the best thing in the in for this town. That's it.
Any other comments or?
Um, I would just want to thank the ambulance association for being so committed to the process with the rest of the task force. Um, and for all the the other towns that participated and gave their time to to get us educated on this on the situation. Um, they didn't have to do that, but they did. Yeah, like like Tim said, it's just a lot of really interesting eye opening stuff. And I do think that the report. Re- reflects consensus of how everybody felt at the end of the process. So I just I'm just thankful that we have the great ambulance service that we do have in town. Let's see that stick around.
I just want to thank everybody who was on the committee for this because I think it was very important. And this is, the report is great. So thank you all for your time. And everyone from the ambulance association as well.
Do you want a motion to accept the report? Do we need what?
Do we need a motion to accept?
You don't, but it it certainly doesn't hurt to put it in the record that way. That does also then officially close the door on the ambulance task force, according to the resume.
Right, so I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Motion to accept the report is there?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Only from the chair. Just want to point out that two years ago, this this was a very tense subject, if that's the right word to use. There was a lot of misinformation. There was a lack of facts. And there were people that were prejudging where emergency services should go and what should be done in town. I think the um. The Board of Finance pushed this forward of to a some degree. And I I see the chairman is on Zoom with us. Asked that the council set policy regarding emergency service before they would receive further. With their plans of funding or how they would fund or if they would fund emergency service. So I'm very pleased that this group came together. I really thank the six participants on the the committee. They did a yeoman's job. And I would also thank Mr. Hens because he got involved himself. And uh, helped with budgets and other. We're having technical problems.
We've got bigger problems than that with those guys.
But I want to thank Ted, thank you for your work on that. Uh, Don Scranton and your, all your people in the association. I thank you for your participation and putting the time in. And to the other emergency service people, uh, either in the fire department or police that also participated. I think it uh, it behooves well of East Hampton and we will be looked at as sort of a model of where things may go in in the area. And I I do hope that one of the outcomes is the state certainly recognizes that they need to put funding into emergency services in local towns. And that maybe one of the secondary things is that we will come to some kind of um. Mutual aid or association. To help service emergency services. We have three. Aspects of emergency services. I see it in town. We have a police department. We have our fire department. We have our ambulance service. None are more important than the other, but when someone is ill, someone has a heart attack, someone is in an accident. The ambulance, the timeliness and work of the ambulance association and volunteers and the drivers and the EMTs. Becomes most critical and most important. We all recognize that. There are no other comments. Those in favor of accepting the report, you see by saying aye. And with that, your call is dismissed. Well, John.
He got it. He got it. Oh, you got it. He got it. He found the button.
We found the button. Continuing business, your view of possible action regarding motor vehicle tax legislation, tax schedules.
This is a continuation of the conversation the council started at its last meeting. By way of reminder for everyone and for introduction for those that weren't here last time. Uh, as we all are aware, uh, we pay a tax on the value of our motor vehicle and the assessed value of our motor vehicles. Uh, as part of the overall taxes we pay to the town of East Hampton. Under. Under uh, previous legislative or under previous state law, rather, those vehicles were assessed at market rate. And that market fluctuated based on uh, obviously going on economy for used vehicles. We all saw that during and immediately following uh, the pandemic when the value of used cars uh, jumped quite a bit. The legislature adopted last year, uh, a change to the way vehicles were being assessed. Uh, a decision was made to, instead of value based on market, they were going to be valued based on their original MSRP. And a straight depreciation schedule starting at eighty-five percent in the first year and dropping by five percent every year. Until it either was uh, bottomed out at fifteen percent of the original MSRP or five hundred dollars, whichever was higher. The um, legislature got a little bit of pushback on that. Uh, under that calculation. Uh, in the town of East Hampton, the value of motor vehicles dropped by uh, almost seven, almost sixteen percent or twenty-three. Million dollars in change. Uh, and the cause, what that causes in, in East Hampton and every other municipality in the state. Uh, is a shift in the taxes paid from motor vehicles to real property. So it increases our mill rate and uh, and impacts in that way. The legislature decided this year to give municipalities an option of slowing that depreciation down. So rather than uh, eighty-five percent depreciation in the first year. It was a municipalities are allowed to select a schedule that starts at ninety percent. And progresses from their five percent a year until you bottom it at twenty percent value or five hundred dollars, as I mentioned before. So the last time the council met, uh, there was some discussion about what that meant to the individual taxpayer. Uh, what that meant on the whole. And so staff did a little bit more of a deep dive for you and provided two pieces of information for you this evening. Uh, in your packets, which were online and you, of course, received late last week. Two things that were included was a list of ninety vehicles. Uh, randomly selected, if you will, from the list of about twelve or fourteen thousand vehicles that we assess uh, every year. Uh, ranging in age from two thousand four to, I think the latest was two thousand twenty-four. So model years, two thousand four and two thousand twenty-four. And as you can see. Uh, there is a bit of a difference in what happens to each of those vehicles. The only way I can summarize what happens to the values of those vehicles is to say that. If a vehicle held its market value. Under the old system, it probably drops in value under the depreciation schedule. But if it did not hold its value so well, it probably increases a little bit under the depreciation schedule. So to that point. Somewhere around eighteen to twenty-two of those vehicles increase in value depending on which. Uh, which schedule the council chooses. And the balance seventy-two to sixty-eight of those vehicles drop in value. So as you can see, the vast majority of our vehicles will drop in value. Uh, as we noted in that twenty-three million dollar loss in value. The other document I gave you uh, shows you the entire schedule of vehicles. Uh, and their values, uh, at least as we pulled them together uh, last week. It's a bit of a moving target sometimes to try and make sure we pick up uh, all the vehicles uh. Where they are being charged, some of them are personal property, some of them are just uh, paid under motor vehicle, but anyway. The overall value of those vehicles, um, as I mentioned to the town council. Drops uh, to, under the eighty-five percent to a hundred and twenty-six million dollars. If we were to use the ninety percent schedule, that value remains at a hundred and forty million dollars. The difference in taxes there is about four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So that's fundamentally what we're talking about. Should pay the four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. That equates, by the way, to about a thirty-nine cent difference on the mill rate. If all of that is on, if that were moved to the mill rate, it would increase our mill rate thirty-nine cents. So that's the information that we provided to you uh, to help you in what is, once you dive into the details. Not an easy choice. Because as I said, it's sort of, to frame it a bit, is. How do we want those four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of taxes to be paid and by whom?
Okay. Are there any questions?
I know, W. Downer, right?
Essentially, I guess I, the question is essentially under either. Situation. The taxes paid are going to be within pennies of one another. Either through motor vehicle or through a shift to the real suffering.
Correct. Um, overall for the town, yes. The, the difference, I mean. Unless the town were to find a way to eliminate four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars from its costs. Um, we need to make that up. And so. Either through taxation on motor vehicles or through taxation on real property and personal property, we'll make that up. You know, part of the question is, like I said, um. Where do we want that to be? Knowing that um, that property taxes. Real property taxes, real estate that we pay on our homes is somewhat regressive uh, in terms of a form of taxation. Less so, I believe, on motor vehicles in general.
Comments or questions?
I still stand by my last meeting.
Which was what?
Stay with the eighty-five that the, the state has done. And only about twenty percent, yeah, twenty states actually oppose the property tax on vehicles. Around the country and uh, they're, they're lowering it for a reason and I. If they has to go to the property taxes, uh, they will pay it through their rents, through their mortgages, through what have you, but. I still agree. I mean, if you, if you look at the numbers, you're talking. Anywhere from seven hundred to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars differential on the first, you know, five years you own a vehicle, which is quite a bit of money.
Mr. Chair, I think we should move it to the ninety percent. I think that that tax belongs to the people who own more expensive vehicles or who own more vehicles. Those are the people that are seeing more of an increase at ninety percent. And I think, to be fair, the people who own that property and those vehicles should be paying their share of the taxes. Taking that four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and spreading out to everyone's real estate tax. That's not fair to people on a limited or fixed income. They shouldn't be bearing the burden of the vehicles that somebody else purchased.
Other comments or questions?
I agree with Karen. I think the ninety percent schedule makes the most sense for the residents in town for the same reasons.
We have a motion.
I make a motion that we change to the ninety percent.
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Sir, full of discussion, comments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed. I vote of four to three, we'll retain the eighty-five percent.
So, Mr. Chair, just to be, just to be clear, that motion failed three to four. Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We can always move it up. That's the point.
We would never do that.
And you know, we've gotten a pre, we've, you know, we've got a reset. And we can always move it up. Let's just see how this new thing. Works.
Thank you. More to see in action. Moving on. Agenda item nine, new business, reviewing possible action regarding splitting vehicle tax payments.
Uh, as part of your discussion last time, you, uh, it was brought up uh, by a council member. Whether we should revisit the discussion on uh, in particular motor vehicle tax and whether we should allow it to be paid. In uh, multiple payments. Uh, by way of reminder, I did put it in my, my note to the council. Uh, state statute allows that municipalities may divide. Uh, tax payments up into a, a, a single payment, uh, two payments or four payments. Uh, and. In East Hampton, uh, we have, uh, we have decided to allow that real estate taxes. Uh, personal property taxes and now sewer fees may be paid in two parts, but we have uh. Previously not allowed motor vehicle tax to be paid in two parts. So the council wanted to come back to that. I've provided you with a little bit of information. Uh, based on taxes paid a year ago, uh, how much those individual bills for. Remember, we're talking about how much an individual car tax bill is. If you have two vehicles, as my family does. You account for them separately as in terms of how the payments are handled. So. I've given you the groupings of uh, various ranges, so you can kind of get a sense. The vast majority of our vehicles. Uh, nine thousand and change of them are equate to a five hundred dollar or less tax bill. The balance. Like I said, somewhere between two and fourth. Was rather higher.
Split the tax bills over a thousand per individual vehicle to two payments. Like the second that?
Thousand or, or more, did you say?
A thousand or more per vehicle. Just on it's not.
Tax, correct.
Right, yeah. Dollar owed to the town.
Break it into two?
Yeah, allow them the choice to break it into two.
Or they could pay one time if they're like.
Same as the prop, uh, real estate.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So we have approximately twelve, if I'm looking at these right and adding quickly in my head, we have approximately twelve thousand vehicles. So this motion applies to three hundred and thirty of those twelve thousand.
You, would it be correct?
Is that correct?
Roughly, yeah, three hundred and change, I, you know, yeah.
Would it be correct that similar to the real estate tax, one mailing of a bill. The, the two parts, the two payments would go out and that it would not be up to the. The revenue services department or the tax department to. Send a second mailing prior to, to due date of that.
Yeah, so of course the council could direct otherwise, but currently, uh, the practice of the town is the single bill with the two-part. Form uh, for payment. Um, and uh, staff has continued to. Work to identify a, a good method by which people could get a reminder that does not involve. All the cost of postage and handling related to an actual second bill. Uh, so we're, we're looking for that, whether it's a text message or it's an email or something, trying to find a good service for that. Uh, so that people have that option. If I may, just quickly full disclosure, uh. So that there's no confusion in the room. State law does allow, uh, or state law indicates that the, the dividing of a bill. And I don't want to necessarily encourage something different, but I have to tell it. Uh, the state law does allow the dividing of a bill that is more than one hundred dollars. Uh, and that is the standard that applies to personal and real property. Of course, um. Sewer fees are simply divided. Most of us pay five hundred and eighty dollars. We can divide that into two parts.
So you were suggesting moving it down from a thousand to a hundred dollars? Cause I'm, I'm just taking from collection. Uh, I'm, I'm thinking that that's more of a reason, I mean, even if five hundred dollars, I'm, I'm thinking from town collection wise. A thousand kind of makes more sense than bringing it down to five hundred or a hundred. I mean, most people can afford a hundred dollars. You know, when you're up to thousands of dollars and you have multiple vehicles, that gets.
Sure.
Ted, I don't think.
No, I understand. And I was not trying to suggest a hundred. I was just full disclosure that at least it's that rate. I. Of, you know, there's a number of residents that. Obviously, all of us pay in one. There's a lot of residents that pay everything upfront and they just get it done with and they're over with it. And there's a, you know, certainly plenty of us as well.
But I mean, if you're looking at. Would it makes more sense to bring it back to five hundred? Do you think a thousand is reasonable? I mean, five hundred, because if you have multiple vehicles, as you stated, the odds are your property tax bill even is gonna be. A thousand bucks anyway with two cars or at least a thousand dollars with two cars. So if you bring the individual card out to five hundred, then you're actually. Bring your thousand into two five hundred dollars. That's from a family standpoint.
That's true.
I think the five hundred dollars benefits more people because you have a lot of people who probably.
Okay. To uh, make it five hundred instead of a thousand for the splitting of uh.
Yeah, I agree. It's gonna benefit more people.
A lot of people have two vehicles valued within that range, so that just helps them out with the vehicle payments.
Yeah, just a question before I go much further. What does the tax collector think about this? As far as extra work and administration, that sort of thing.
I mean, we would likely rece- we would have to handle more transactions. Uh, many of those are through the mail or currently online, notwithstanding my town manager report. Um. Many of those come in, are just dropped in the box and we deal with them as they come. So I mean. They, the collector recognizes that uh, there will be additional payments made. Uh, to the town because people will select the two payment option undoubtedly. Um, I think she has other concerns about delinquencies and uh, failures to pay that second uh. Installment as we have with, with others. I know Jeff, uh, Joko, the finance director's in the office. I don't know whether Jeff has anything more. He wants to add, but he's certainly available for questions if you have them. Um, look, she's. Not turning cartwheels down the hallway, you know, about having more payments being made at the, at the front desk, but she's certainly willing and they're very capable. Of, of handling.
You know, I was taking a look at that too, the difference between a, a thousand and five hundred. And yes, it would benefit more people, I think. Then you got somebody paying five hundred and two dollars tax on a vehicle. They gotta pay all at once. Somebody paying for. It being charged four ninety, uh, you know, has to pay it all at once. That. Five hundred, at least at this time, not to say we could never get there. Might be, we might be going too fast too soon in my view. Uh, but I, I could see maybe split the difference at about seven fifty. Something like that. I don't know. It doesn't have to be in five hundred dollar increments, does it?
No.
That's just my thought. I think getting down to five hundred all at once, um, for a lot of reasons. Uh, also cash flow for the town. Um, that's a concern. Anyway, those, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, why, why did we start out with one, I, I mean, we've been doing it that way. For probably thirty, forty years.
No.
No?
No, I don't believe so, right? Am I, am I right? Wrong on that, Ted? Wasn't it set up before we used to do to uh?
Portland does, but I mean, it, 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 no, it's, it's for, we do it for everything except vehicles.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, Marlboro, Portland, um. Yeah, even personal property tax, like, so even to my top pops, you know, you get a, a tiny tax bill, you still gets, they're, they're automatically split.
So if Jeff was not, shaking his head back there, uh, no, in response to the, didn't we do it this way before? Um. So for East Hampton, up until a few years ago, the only bill that you could split was your real estate, personal property tax. Um, that was the only bill that could be split. Then uh, three years, but twenty-two, maybe the sewer split. The sewer split was allowed in, in, uh, based on the decision of the billing body there, that was allowed. So. Um. As long as we've been paying motor vehicle tax.
It's always been.
It's always been one pay.
Yeah. Since the mid eighties, because we had the same discussion on the council in the eighties. The tax collector were jerking saying, don't you dare break it into two. She used to tell me, don't you dare break it into two. Yes, dear.
I mean, the other options, of course, back in those days, everybody was coming to the town hall then to pay those bills. And I remember those lines, frankly, but. Now we've got a lot more people that, that are. Now we've got a lot more people that that are, um, you know, mailing in payments, you know, and fair number of people, as you saw again in my town manager report, that pay online. Uh, through other methods, so.
So if we go to five hundred and it seems to be commerce okay and just go up to seven fifty or just.
Frankly, it's a decision the council can make every.
I just. Benefit to everybody. Well, it has to be a minimum of a hundred dollars.
Right, but I I can't imagine you get a lot of vehicle tax bills less than a hundred dollars.
Like, less than a hundred? No, I'd definitely have to go back and split that out again.
Can't think of.
Less than a five hundred, it's nine thousand or the twelve thousand.
I can't imagine anybody who needs that break more than somebody who's still driving a vehicle. That is old enough to be depreciated that part of the third one, ten hundred dollars in taxes. And I don't know that to say that. Where my tax be tax is six hundred dollars. You know, I I should be able to pay that. That's the vehicle. So I just think we give it to everybody or we give it to nobody. I don't, I'm not in favor of splitting it at a. At a dollar amount that benefits one group of people over and on.
So you want to bring it down to a hundred?
Yeah, make it as accessible as possible.
Well, I mean, the the minimum is a hundred. So you can't bring it down any lower than a hundred to split. So is that where you'd like?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Make it as accessible as possible by statute. It's a hundred dollars. That's what we did.
And again, people don't have to split it, which I can't imagine people are gonna split it two hundred dollars, but whatever.
That's a three thousand dollar assessment, by the way.
I think if they are splitting a hundred dollar bill, they really need to.
I mean, if they want, I mean, if you want me to change it to a hundred dollars, I'll change it to a hundred dollars. I just can't see a lot of people taking advantage of that, and I think that that. Does bring it to, you know, twelve thousand versus three thousand, so it it is quite a bit more because there's nine thousand that are under five hundred dollars. But I mean, if you want a hundred, I'll I'll change my motion to reduce it to a hundred. I think it's a little low personally. I I think five hundred is a better number. Uh, just from a a workflow, I I mean, Jeff, what's your thought? Well, that's what, do you think five hundred is reasonable?
Yeah, I agree. That's gonna be less work.
I think the the concern is, are we going to get. Much short and have to hire temporary personnel to.
Well, if you had nine thousand more payments to it versus, you know, three thousand. I mean, i- i- in five hundred. I think five hundred is reasonable.
I do.
To split. I I really.
Dean, are you afraid that somebody's not gonna pay their second part of it? Is that what you're getting at or no?
People forget to do.
But yeah, but you know what? That's almost advantage because you got your minimum one, your your percent and half a month, so you get an extra revenue source, which gentle note. Uh, is actually a plus, um, because as I said, I I'm one of those, I normally, I forget to pay my second one, I get my little reminder and they get extra money for me every January or February when I remember to pay it. So.
What's that, a dollar?
Yeah, so it's, no, it's minimum of two dollars, my friend. But you know, but it is a percent and a half on the unpaid balance, you know, the following month and and the the run is well. I do like the idea of a text reminder instead of a um. Because reality is that.
Instead of email.
We don't have to send out a property tax bill by statute. They did, they're, because like we went through this when I was back when I was on council. Technically, you just have to post it in the paper that the property taxes are due. Which is ridiculous and everyone goes nuts, but I. So anyway, I guess we'll we'll leave my motion at five hundred dollars.
I think we should go with the five hundred, see how the tax office handles it, and certainly if any citizens and residents have concerns. That they feel it should be lower than five hundred, they can always come to the council and. Make their plea.
I like the second second. The revised motion.
Motion before us is to uh set the five hundred.
Yeah, split five hundred and allow taxpayers to pay it in two installments.
Is there any further discussion on the matter? If we get to a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay.
Nay.
By a vote of six to one, the ayes have it.
Okay, we will implement that uh this year.
Well, at least we agree on one thing.
It's under item ten, Town Manager Report.
I agree on how I work this chair. I'm amazing. I'm stuck.
I have a couple of things that I just want to mention uh to the council again, the. Nightly reminder that my uh town manager report is in the on the town's website in the, not only in the town council packet, but also. Uh, on the town manager's page. Uh, but mainly I want to focus a little bit on um. On public works and activities upcoming so that the residents. Uh, have a little bit of forewarning about activities that are going to be going on around town. The department itself uh is right now mobilized out or mobilizing out on uh Stath and Aaron's Way. They're going to be doing some drainage improvements on Stath. This is the road connector between uh Route sixty-six and effectively Lake Drive. On the north side of the lake there, so they'll be doing some drainage improvements there and then reclaiming and repaving uh those two roads. The town's uh crack filling contractor will be in town primarily working in the Princess Pocatog area and the so-called Poets neighborhood. Uh, so all of those, all of our favorite poets named streets are going to be seeing some uh crack filling uh undertaking soon. Uh, the other big thing I'll mention right now, uh other two big things that I'll mention right now is uh at Sears Park. Uh, the athletic fields project will be getting underway shortly, so for a reminder for everybody. Uh, the the tennis courts, the basketball court and the former skate park are all being pulled out. There that area is being regraded, reconditioned and two new tennis courts with four pickleball courts uh striped on them. Uh, will be reinstalled, a new full-size basketball court will be reinstalled and a dedicated pickleball court will be installed. Uh, in that park in the upcoming months. Uh, and then the big one that I think will be not only exciting, but also be a little bit uh challenging for all of us in the next couple of months. Uh, the Village Center project, uh council will recall, we awarded that project back in December. Uh, we've met with that contractor, we've had a public couple of public information sessions with residents and businesses in the area. That work will be starting here uh as soon as the final DOT permit comes in for the contractors, so probably in the next couple of weeks. Uh, they've already started to mobilize on the site, their uh their job site. Uh, primarily their trailer and main storage will be kind of in that area. Uh, behind Pose, I'll call it, between Pose and Liberty Landscape. Uh, they're gonna be working in that area and then they'll have storage in other places as well. Uh, but uh that project will get underway, as I said, in the next couple of weeks. And should wrap up by uh June or so, has to be finished by the fourth of July so that we're all cleaned up and gone. Uh, by uh old home days. Uh, that project, I'll remind everyone, involves uh sidewalks and pedestrian safety, so sidewalks are getting removed. And replaced, all the bricks that are there that are undulating and and uneven footing and the like. Uh, are getting pulled out, the memorial bricks that we have in those areas and the ones that we salvaged and saved. From across the street, so to speak, from Red Door in front of uh Little Fish and uh Old Bank Flowers. Those have been pulled out and all of those will be reused in this in the uh project. They'll be stretched down the streets in a in a in a brick walk effect. Uh, so we'll have a regular sidewalk with that brick effect on either side of the street. Uh, and um throughout new. Uh, hardscaping for pedestrian and for uh businesses to use as outdoor seating. Uh, and then um some uh some parking modifications down there. We're actually gonna get some striped parking downtown, uh which we don't have today. Uh, so a variety of things undertaking there, but that'll be uh impactful for everyone. Uh, as that's going on uh in the next few months. So those are the. That activity is underway and uh will, it is now construction season officially, so watch for that. The last thing I'll mention is related to the budget. Uh, the Board of Finance was planning to have a deliberation session tomorrow night that is canceled, so residents need to be aware of that. Uh, those, that notification was posted earlier uh today. Uh, they will be meeting next week on uh April second. Uh, here in the town hall, six thirty in the evening. Uh, so if someone wants to come and watch that deliberation session or see it online, they can certainly do that. Uh, the the cancellation was due to, I think they're looking for some information that's being developed right now. Uh, in hopes that they can use that as part of their deliberations, so uh they're gonna postpone that a little bit. And uh. That is supposed to come to the town council by mid-April. I think it'll probably be postponed a little bit further, as I said, looking for that information. Uh, to try and give the best recommendation that they can. So uh those are my comments for this evening. If there are questions, I will certainly answer them.
So as I was pulling in uh off sixty-six today, there's a some, what is our. Responsible, because we don't own any of the roads, correct? They're they're maintained by.
They're private.
So what is his obligation to fix cracks, to fix where the the drains, you know? Because the first the first area, when you first turn in, is not as um. Nice as once you take a right to come up to the town hall. So how do, where do we have any say in how he maintains the entrance to the town hall driveway?
So as a property owner in the subdivision, we don't have much say. Uh, as a land use regulator for the town, we have a little bit of say. Um, we have in the past, the town has. Uh, there is a clause in the contract that we have as a property owner in the subdivision. With the entity that owns the subdivision uh that we have employed in the past about. Um, poor road qualities. Uh, and that's how the front portion got paved. Uh, the very front portion up to um, I'll call it that first island.
Right.
Right there, that's how that got repaved and got redone. Um, I I don't disagree with that. I think he's gonna have, the the owner is going to have some work to do however there, because as we can all see when we come in, it is all alligator. I think he's got a lot of pavement to pull out and some base repair to do before he can repave.
So is there any way to start a communication with them to see if that would be?
We can find out what their plan is. He has uh a patchwork out. Out there, so we can find out.
I think he's somewhat waiting to finish his next phase before he finishes on the.
About, I mean, when would that be? And I mean, you know, against what's representing the town.
Yeah, it it. It was supposed to have started back several months ago, but I think it's on schedule for early summer.
And uh, not specifically mentioned in your report, but I do want to thank the police department for all their efforts in curbing speeding. Um, certainly has reminded me to make sure I keep my speeds down going through town, so thank you for that.
Yeah, that's, uh, we have been the fortunate beneficiaries, or some of us have been unfortunate beneficiaries. Of a grant that the chief was able to receive again, uh some of you know that we've received that in the past, that was dedicated to uh speeding enforcement, so. Our staff was out very heavily in the last four weeks and that uh will continue to do that, kind of pay attention.
Did could you just comment? On your very last paragraph, under Town Manager, other relative to the credit card fees.
Sure.
Just to see where we are relative to that.
Yeah, um, so the uh. There's a note in there and there's a letter in there from me to the legislature. Discussing a proposal that apparently is on the table to eliminate the ability of the town to charge. Uh, the fees to someone who chooses to use a credit card to pay a bill. Uh, so if someone decides that they want to pay their tax bill or whatever, uh bill that they can pay through the town uh with a credit card. Um, we currently charge a fee of, I think it's three and a quarter percent. Uh, and what that pays for is the fact that. When a credit card gets used, the ownership bank takes a part of that fee off. As does uh as well as some fees come off for the cash back offers that we all have in the travel points and whatever. All that gets taken off of the amount that gets paid to the um to the business owner, so if we, you know, charge a hundred dollars to a business owner. They might get anywhere from ninety-five dollars to maybe if they're lucky, ninety-seven dollars. A business owner has to take that hit. Um, a municipality uh does not, and generally they do not take that hit because it is a choice made by an individual, so. Um, I put some information in my note and I put some information in my letter to the legislature that talked about that. And currently today, um, our residents have chosen to pay in that way and have paid about fifty-five thousand dollars, if I remember the numbers correctly. About fifty-five thousand dollars in fees. If the town of East Hampton were forced to eat those fees and it was only those fees that we had to eat. That's another five cents per thousand on everybody's tax. Just to pay that bill.
What do we actually pay? We, it's gotta be somewhere around two percent, so we got, that's gotta be a profit uh center at some point.
Not for us.
That we actually got charged the fifty-five thousand that we collected?
No, no, that's a convenience that gets passed through to the individual.
But is it a one for one? Because we actually have a three and a quarter percent?
No, it's a it's a third party vendor that does the work. And they take a three and a half percent and that's what they figure they on average have to pay back to the credit card that was used. So they have to hedge that bet. They take three and a half percent or three and a quarter percent. So that our residents pay that fee, we don't get that, any of that. We don't. We get the tax bill that they paid. So in that, in the scenario that was being suggested by the state, and frankly, it's a piece of legislation that would disallow the state from charging. Uh, credit card fees for, I believe, um, its professional uh licensures. Uh, and they added in a section that would prohibit municipalities from charging those fees on on any payment made by a credit card. And. If. It were only fifty-five thousand dollars, and I'm saying it that way intentionally, if it were only fifty-five thousand dollars. We either have to reduce our revenues by that much, which again costs us all money. Or we have to make that up in some way, which again costs all of us money.
What you know, if there's there's no fee?
Precisely.
I'm using it.
Precisely.
But I will, I'm too cheap to.
If there were no fee, the hypothesis is that many, many more people would simply take advantage of that.
That's what I'm saying. I would, hundred percent.
That's the only reason I send a check.
Right.
I mean, I won't even pay the dollar ninety-five for the debit or whatever it is.
Uh, right, it's it's. So it was a concerning piece of legislation. I chose to make a statement on uh about it. Uh, to the legislature. Uh, the public hearing, I think, might have been yesterday.
Thank you for making that statement.
How did the public hearing go to you here?
I don't know. I didn't, I wasn't able to follow up on it, so I don't know.
The only reason.
I can tell you that Representative Haynes was not very excited about that. I happened to talk to her today and so. She's not in favor of that.
It it, it's gonna cost, I mean. She runs it. I mean, as it is, the the like DMV, they accept credit card for any transaction amount, which is kind of great, so the the state is. Implementing it and they do not charge for licensure at this point, at least when I renew my licenses, I don't get it, and they want a credit card.
Right, so it's a choice. Some people make it, they have done the math as some people in this room have done. And find it certainly pays off for them to pay their bill in that way, and while they might pay extra. The dividend on the other end is better and they choose to pay that fee. I will remind our residents that they still have that option if they want to pay online, but I will also remind you that if you choose. To electronically pay by check, so to speak, so you give us your routing number and your account number. No charge, we'll just take that right out. You don't have to come and see us, pardon?
That was a dollar ninety-five.
Now, if you do a an e-check essentially, if you effectively give us the information that's at the bottom of your check. Um.
I could do.
We eat the fifty cents.
Okay.
Because no sense coming down in. Here or writing a check for those of us that actually have checks. It's an option.
I've been checked all the time.
I just, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
Appointments, do we have any appointments?
Yes, one, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we do have a resignation uh. In the Commission on Aging, so we have a full uh member position open. Uh, to which I'd like to move up uh Dave McGovern, who is currently a an alternate. To that position on a commission on aging. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
To fill Shelley's on on uh expired term, you should add.
That's not the commission, that's on the commission on aging?
Say again?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my question.
That's on housing, no?
No, it's Commission on Aging.
Okay, okay.
So my understanding is that there's on the Commission on Aging, there's a representing representative from the housing. The senior housing, does it need to be a board, the the one that is elected? By the residents to sit on the board or is it any housing? Member for the Commission on Aging to represent the housing authority?
I understand it to be, uh. I think the ordinance is silent as to that. But whoever sits on, whoever's on that comes comes on the. But whoever sits on, whoever's on that comes, comes on the Commission on Aging, and Dave McGovern is in fact.
Do like. Right, I, but I know that there was a little back and forth on that, so I just didn't know if Dave had to be the one or Shelley could have stayed on. Or her, stayed on the commission.
Well, the way the ordinance is, is written relative to the Commission on Aging, that. The, that a uh member of the board. On the housing authority. Must be on the Commission on Aging as a full member.
I thought it was just a member of the housing, housing itself.
Yeah, Dave. Dave is currently an alternate. And I talked with Eric Rosenberg, the.
Oh, yeah, no, I I just, I just wanted clarification because I thought it was just any resident at the, the, the housing.
No, no, no.
And we've been go.
No. Ordinance says it's got to be on the uh housing authority from the housing authority board.
Okay, you were correct the first time.
What did I say, first time?
The first time you were correct. You said it was silent as to whether they had to be on the board, and I will read you from the, the ordinance is in front of me. You were correct the first time, and the members shall be appointed by the council and selected as follows. One member shall be a representative of the East Hampton Housing Authority. One can decide what that means. It's not clear that it says the housing authority board. But it does specifically use the phrase of the East Hampton Housing Authority.
And so that.
Is it a resident? Is it a person on the board?
Well, I, I think that's pretty vague. That's pretty vague.
It, it, it does not.
The housing authority means the commission, or it would seem to me.
It could, and you have, you've certainly met that.
Yeah.
If that's the interpretation.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be.
I was just wondering because if she wanted to stay on and her term was up, and it's typically common practice, uh, you know, re-up if they've done, you know, whatever job. That's why I just wanted, did she, was she asked to re-up or was, did we just move him up because he's now the um, the housing authority uh representative? Does that make sense, my question?
She is, she is not on the housing authority.
I I understand, but she's still a resident of the housing authority.
But it's not the housing authorities of senior housing. She's not a resident of the housing authority.
Or the, of the two senior housing. That, but it said it was silent to that, so that's what my question is. Is it any member that is a resident at. From the East Hampton Housing Authority or the senior housing?
That, that's now, now how, the, the, that's not how the Commission on Aging. Reads it, nor that's not how we read it. On the Appointments Committee. Somebody has to be from the Housing Authority Commission, the board. That's how we read it.
Well, then it probably should, that should probably be modified because if that's, you know, because if it's silent to it, um, we probably should have some clarification to that. Um. That commission's appointment process.
But the housing itself isn't the authority. The authority is the group that oversees the housing.
The housing, the housing authority is the one that owns the property. So if the resident of the housing, they are residents of the housing authority or would be representing. Their collective seventy units.
So I, I believe this discussion, the summer standard is academic. Because if Shelley. Applied to be on the Commission of Aging, you have a, a position you could appoint her to, right?
An alternate at this point.
Yeah, so she could be appointed to the.
I was just saying, was she asked to continue her, her appointment? I guess it's just, that was just my, you know.
Look, we, we got a resignation from her.
Okay.
And Dave is on the commission, and it's a natural move up to fulfill what we understand to be. The intention of the ordinance. I don't know else to say it.
I, I don't think Shelley was asked to resign.
Yeah, right. Okay, I, well, that, that was, I guess, where I was going. Where she asked to resign it was, you know, she basically kicked off the board initiative.
I stood, I stood and I didn't ask her.
She's done quite a bit on it.
For sure.
When I was on housing, uh.
Yeah.
You know, so that, that, that was my concern.
Can, can I recommend, though, that there may, she may have been, may have been confused. And felt that she had to resign. And so I would think there should be a communication to her. Telling her that if she would like to continue to serve. On the commission, or in this case as an alternate. She'd be welcome to apply for that position. Can, can we figure out how to make that communication?
Yeah. I, I, I believe.
Maybe Kathy, could you communicate that to her? Is that?
Yeah, I think that already. Easy. I think she's already, that has already occurred, but we can re-ask her again.
Okay, thank you.
Your work.
So should we hold on that one until the next meeting then?
I'm okay with that.
No, that's my motion. I think that's where we need to go. I mean, if it's not passed, it's not passed, but uh.
Did you get a second? No, we've got a motion in the second. Yeah.
That, that was my motion. I don't know.
I'll second it.
Who's second?
Oh, okay.
Alright.
We had it seconded or not. It was an hour ago.
There's no further discussion on the matter. Those in favor of removing the appointment. David McGovern.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. I, I'm fine with that. I just want clarification, because I think it is unclear. Maybe we should look at clarifying.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make sure that uh Jay is communicated with, if she hasn't already been.
There's no tax refunds?
Tax refunds.
There's not the. I don't believe there's any tax refunds.
Hold it.
Recant. This is, this is my whole thing I do.
Well, that is our first move on tax refunds.
Agenda item thirteen, public remarks. Is there anyone here who wish to make public remarks at this time? I would just make two comments. One. I would encourage members of the council, if they have the time, to either zoom in or attend the finance. Meeting, so they, they get a. Better understanding during. Their report. Which we ultimately get. And the second, I hearing the issue again. Another source, other sources tonight, about a noise ordinance. I'm, I plan on appointing a, a subcommittee of the council to look into that. I'm uh. Appointing. Vice Chairman of the Council. As Chair of the Subcommittee. And anyone else who would like to be on that, just let me know. And uh. I will include you.
Thank you. Yeah, a little minor. I can, I could be on that if you like. Um, David, just because we're on this, can I ask a, a quick question? I, I think I, I know my answer, but I, maybe you can make sure I'm correct. I believe in the state of Connecticut, there is a blue law. We can't start a race engine on Sunday till noon. Is it just automobiles? Or is a noise. With certain decimal?
Uh, to be honest with you, Mr. Feagle, I do not know the answer to that question.
I, I think it's just.
Chief, you don't know the answer to that question, I assume? Alright.
I think it's just automobiles. No matter where we are in the state of Connecticut, we can't start a race engine on Sunday until noon.
Huh.
It started, I believe, in Litchfield, where Lime Rock Park is.
Okay.
And this was seventy years ago, probably. Uh. And I think, I, I guess my, in my, I think it's just automobiles.
I would guess because we shoot prior to noon on Sundays.
But.
Uh, I will be happy to check.
I was just wondering, is that would say one thing, it says, okay, we can't do something until noon.
Sure, we'll check into that.
You know, and that, it could be just. It, it was started in Litchfield area, I believe, and was Lime Rock was concerned, so it might just, they might just have that as a automobile.
But that would be a Sunday, and they said they all.
And we can't play football in Bevan Park on Sundays either.
I, you're right, I could be wrong.
That was what the presentation was.
Yeah.
Ask the question if we still have blue laws.
I, we'll find out. We'll find out.
Is there anyone else who? Chooses to make public comment? If not, you have. Other court communications correspondence and announcements either on the town website or in your package. And agi- agenda item fifteen adjournment, is there a motion? I didn't catch who said that, but I.
Everyone.
Thank you for.